I'd like to call this meeting of the Schenectady City Council Caucus to order. We have two public hearings tonight, if the clerk would read those.
Public hearing number one regarding a proposed amendment to Chapter 144 of the Code of the City of Schenectady related to an inclusion of a dog enumeration fee.
And number two?
Number two regarding the approval of the budget for the Upper Union Street bid.
All right, and then we'll go right into items for original consideration. Item number one?
Item number one, under original consideration, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Schenectady County entitled "The Real Property Tax Levy and Collection and Enforcement Agreement."
Is there any request to have this as a roll call vote, or are we okay with consent? Okay, without objection on consent. Item number two?
Item number two, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement regarding a bulletproof vest partnership grant.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three?
Item number three, a resolution authorizing the Schenectady Fire Department to file a grant application.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number four?
Item number four, a resolution approving the adopting the budget of the Upper Union Street Business Improvement District.
This is one of those unusual times when it's a public hearing, but we're also going to be voting on it because of the time constraints, so again, without objection on consent. Okay, item number five?
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 582 to Ninja Restaurant for awnings and a sign on the building located at 11-13 North Broadway, Schenectady, New York.
Without objection on consent. Item number six?
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to establish a trust and agency account on behalf of the Central Park Dog Park Renovation Committee.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number seven?
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with CDM Smith regarding sanitary sewer overflows.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number eight?
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the transfer of 1358 Van Cortlandt Street to Jessica Danny.
Discussed numerous times in committee and Claims Committee without objection on consent. Item number nine?
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax surcharge concerning 432 Franklin Street.
Discussed in the Claims Committee without objection on consent. Item number 10?
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a claim by Vincent and Donna Riggi.
Also discussed in Claims Committee, Mr. Riggi. Roll call, please. Yes, okay. Item number 11?
Item number 11, a resolution recognizing the contributions to the community by the Schenectady High School Junior ROTC.
This will be taken out of order, Ms. Porterfield will present that. Item number 12?
Item number 12, a resolution honoring Barbara Blanchard.
This will also be taken out of order, Mrs. Brucker will present that. And then we have two items, or four unanimous consent.
Item 12A?
Yep, item 12A.
Item 12A, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with the City of Schenectady Industrial Development Agency for a grant in support of anti-graffiti initiatives.
I'll entertain a motion to move that to the agenda. Okay, Mr. Riggi, seconded by Ms. Parazzo, all in favor, aye, and a motion then to put it on the consent agenda. Okay, Mr. Riggi, again, okay, Ms. Porterfield seconds it, all in favor, aye. All right. And item number 12B?
12B, a resolution authorizing the transfer title of parcels of real property.
This was discussed in Claims Committee tonight, I'll entertain a motion to move it to the agenda. Okay, Mr. Riggi, seconded by Ms. Parazzo, all in favor, aye, and move it to the consent agenda. Ms. Parazzo, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor, aye. All right. Is there anything else to come before the City Council Caucus? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Ms. Parazzo, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor, aye. All right, we are adjourned. I will now call the City Council meeting to order for December 23rd, 2013, and ask you to rise for the invocation from Reverend Dr. William Levering, First Reformed Church.
Let us pray, Almighty and ever-loving God, we thank you for those who serve the city and the common good. Tonight, we thank you for Barbara Blanchard in particular. We ask you to bless her gifts to this community and bless her life. Bless all of us as we appreciate her service. In this holiday season, we ask that you bless those who reach for your holiness, be with all of us as we try to respect each other and as we all try to find your presence as it comes into our lives. Bless each candle, each light, each song, each note, each heart to your service. In your holy name we pray, amen.
I'm going to ask Barbara's husband, Art, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Parazzo.
Present.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Erickson.
Ericson.
Ms. Blanchard.
Yes.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Ms. Brucker.
Here.
Ms. King.
Present. All right, we have two out-of-order resolutions, so I will ask Ms. Porterfield to do the first one, which is recognizing the Junior ROTC.
Thank you. If the members of the ROTC will join me behind, please. Come this way. Yes. Oh, okay, all right. Yeah. They won't be facing the camera. Come on in. We'll make as much room as possible. Do we need to move a little bit more?
Madam President, you have the floor. A resolution honoring the Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. Whereas the Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, ROTC, is a program for training young people to become citizens of good character dedicated to serving their nation and community who may intend to join the United States Armed Forces. And whereas local corps designated New York 20062 proudly operates out of the Schenectady High School as part of the GE Scholars of Humanities and Culture. And whereas the students that participate in the AFJR ROTC have classroom study that includes many aspects of aviation and spaceflight with introduction to military custom and courtesies, citizenship in the United States, first aid, wellness, health and fitness, basic drill and ceremonies, effective communications, management, human relations, and life after high school. And whereas their foundational core value being integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all we do, the AFJR ROTC has their mission statement, develop citizens of character dedicated to serving their nation and community. And whereas over the course of the past four years, the AFJR ROTC in serving their community, the members have recruited over 9,700 community service hours. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Schenectady City Council hereby pauses in its deliberations to honor members of the Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps and to thank them for their commitment and services to the Schenectady community. Madam President, I'd like to move the resolution.
All right, is there a second? Ms. Parazzo, all in favor, aye. Congratulations and thank you.
On behalf of Schenectady High School Junior ROTC program, we would like to thank the mayor and the City of Schenectady for this recognition and an honor of being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much and best of luck to you in your future endeavors. Thank you for your service.
And I will note that some of the members are going to be participating and are swearing All right, our second out-of-order resolution is a resolution honoring Barbara Blanchard, and Mrs. Brucker is going to present that.
Madam Chair, Madam President, fellow City Council members, Barbara's friends, and many, many family members and friends that are here tonight, it is a great honor for me to be able to read this tonight, and so glad that you were able to attend, and so, without further ado, I'd like to put forth this resolution. This is a resolution honoring Barbara Blanchard. Whereas Barbara Blanchard has been a true Schenectadian, having been born at Ellis Hospital, grown up as a child on Ray Street, and lived and worked her entire life in the Schenectady community. And whereas Barbara worked for 20 years in the Office of Schenectady County Child Protective Services, first as a caseworker and later as a supervisor, during which period she had a history of visiting homes all over the city to help families deal with a myriad of different difficult situations. And whereas Barbara was instrumental in the creation of the Union Triangle Historic District, Schenectady's fourth historic district, with the name thereof having been created and adopted in the parlor of her home, a location from which she led many activities that were successful in helping to preserve this neighborhood where she has lived since the early 1970s. And whereas she has had a significant impact on the greening of Schenectady as the co-founder of Retreat Schenectady and assisted with economic and environmental development of the city by co-founding the Schenectady Green Market and chairing this aim for two years. And whereas she also served as a Girl Scout troop leader and as a member of the Schenectady Energy Advisory Board. And whereas Barbara commenced her service as a member of the Schenectady City Council in 2006 and has served continuously and honorably since that time. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Schenectady City Council and the mayor pause in our deliberations to thank Barbara Blanchard for her tireless service to the City of Schenectady, to honor her for her dedication, and to wish her the very best in the future. Madam President, I move the resolution.
Right, seconded by Mr. Erickson, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Barbara.
Absolutely.
And then I know the mayor has a presentation he wants to make.
Art, why don't you come over and maybe you can help with this. This is presented to Barbara Blanchard, Councilwoman 2006 through 2013, in recognition of eight years of exemplary service on the Schenectady City Council. Oh. Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. Glasses. So sorry. "If one pine were placed in a town square, what admiration it would excite, yet who is conscious of the pine tree multitudes in the free woods, though open to everyone?" And that's from John Muir. And this is very significant from us, and we'd like to present you with it, and thank you again for everything you've done for the city and all the contributions you've made with us during your time on the City Council.
And Mayor McCarthy also has a presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. Barbara, it's great to see you here tonight, and it's just a true testament to your influence and stature in this community by the broad outpouring of support that's here tonight. The highest award the city can give is to have the mayor designate an individual a patroon. And I can think of... I can't think of anyone better who represents what's good about this community. Your perseverance, your tenacity, and just your friendship has made such a difference in the lives of so many people in the City of Schenectady and our surrounding area. So I'm very proud to present that to you and wish you the best in your future, and again, thank you for all you've done for the City of Schenectady.
We also have a letter from former Councilmember Tom Delasala that he has asked us to read into the record, so our deputy clerk would read that.
Barbara, I'm sorry I can't be there tonight to join in the celebration of your lifetime of public service, but I wanted to add my voice to the chorus of those singing your praises. During my term on the council, I marveled at your passion, determination, and patience. Working with you on several committees and sitting next to you at meetings for four years, I got an up-close look at the way you delve into an issue and push the rest of the council to understand your position. Even when we didn't agree, I respected that you had done your homework and your positions were based on what you saw as the best interests of the city. Whether it was the green market, police cars with better mileage, recycling, energy conservation in city buildings, or the design of the Erie Boulevard project, you always presented an articulate argument with legitimate talking points. You've been the model of a council member, and you set a standard that few can surpass. As you leave office, I wish you and Art nothing but the best. Sincerely, Tom Delasala.
And you know, when we do these resolutions, we never get everything in, so I'm just going to highlight a couple of other things that Barbara has done. She's been very active with the Schenectady Heritage Foundation. She created the Liveable Cities Program that many of us participated in. She was as Energy Advisory Board member. Of course, we mentioned founding the Green Market, and I still remember going on a trip over to Troy with you and others to check out their green market. And so, she was just, she really made that happen, and I think that's probably one of the best things that's going on in the city right now. So I, too, just want to thank you. It's been wonderful working with you, and I look forward to seeing you around in the community for different events. So again, thank you very much. All right, now back to city business. We have two public hearings. One is regarding the dog enumeration fee, and I have one person signed up to speak to that, and that's Chuck Thorne.
Mayor McCarthy, Madam President, council members, the proposed ordinance to institute a $15 dog enumeration fee in the City of Schenectady will fund a dog census. The purpose of a dog census or an enumeration is to identify licensed and unlicensed dogs in the City of Schenectady. Today, we have approximately 2,100 dogs licensed in the City of Schenectady, an increase from 1,400 licenses at the end of 2012. Estimates place the dog population of the city anywhere between 11,000 to 15,000 dogs. Licensing is vital to protect the health and well-being not only of our residents but the dogs as well. The benefits to dog owners include a license identifying the dog, allowing you to be quickly reunited in the case that they go stray. Licensed dogs are held longer at animal shelters than unlicensed dogs. A license ensures that dogs are vaccinated against rabies, which is a fatal disease. Owners of the licensed dog receive helpful reminders to re-vaccinate their pets prior to the rabies vaccination. Licensing benefits to the public health. Licensing lowers the overall cost and health risk of rabies by making certain that dogs are vaccinated and providing a revenue stream for prevention programs. A single rabies incident resulting from a dog whose vaccination has expired costs a taxpayer thousands of dollars. This money could be saved and used elsewhere if the dog's vaccination is current. Unlicensed dogs, unlicensed dog owners who are identified through the census will be assessed a $15 enumeration fee in addition to licensing fee. They'll be required to license their dog within 30 days. Owners who do not comply will be issued a summons to appear in court. In Schenectady as well as other communities, stray and unlicensed dogs have become a public safety concern and a strain on limited resources. Dog enumerators will be hired as temporary seasonal employees. Four enumerators will work five hours a day during the months of May through September. They will cycle through various neighborhoods so no one is able to anticipate detection. Enumerators will receive training by the Schenectady Police Department. They will not enter homes, they will identify the presence of a dog and leave a notice of enumeration, an information packet which includes license application, literature explaining why license is necessary. Enumerators will be instructed to avoid any level of conflict or confrontation and report any non-compliance to either police or animal control officers. By focusing on licensed renewals and delinquent licenses, we have improved our retention and have seen a 30% increase in licensing fees from 2010 to 2012. Community outreach and public relations campaigns have enabled us to increase licensing by 50% in the last six months of 2013. Stronger measures are required to improve compliance. Reaching 80 to 90% compliance within a three-to-four-year span could result in revenue of over $100,000 per year, which would go toward licensing. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak to that public hearing, so I'm going to declare that hearing closed. I also have no one signed up to speak regarding the budget for the Upper Union Street bid, so I'm also going to declare that hearing closed. And I just remember I was also asked, Miriam Kajusti, our affirmative action officer, had wanted to make an announcement. Miriam, come on up.
Madam President, council members, the affirmative action office would like to announce to the public that applications are presently being accepted for the firefighter civil service exam. The filing deadline is January 21st, and the exam date is March 8th. Anyone interested in taking the civil service exam is asked to pick up an application at the civil service office. We're at 626 State Street, and they can also call the office, the number is 518-388-4233. The information is posted on the affirmative action webpage and on the civil service webpage. Anyone interested in taking the exam can contact the civil service office or my office and request an application. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to the approval of the minutes from December 9th, 2013. I'll entertain a motion to prove that. Okay, Ms. Parazzo, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor, aye. Communications and petitions?
Communications presented to City Council for Monday, December 23rd, 2013. Under official, there are none; under general, there are none; and under petitions, there are none.
Okay. Committee reports. Mr. Riggi.
President, Claims Committee has been meeting over the past few cycles about the city-county tax agreement to make the county whole, and this is something that we've been going over and over and over. And we finally come to an agreement, and the main crux in all the council was an agreement with to pay this over three years. Once that was hammered out, I know this isn't a perfect agreement, but it's an agreement, and that's the way agreements are. There's some give and take, and there was a lot of give and take with this, but the main thing is the three payments for 2012 and '13, they'll be made in three years. Payment for 2012 will be made by January 31st of 2014. By February 15th of '15, we'll pay 50% of what we owe for 2013, and the remainder will be paid the following year in 2016. So that's the crux of this agreement, and it will give the city control of the properties when there's a foreclosure process, so there isn't two entities foreclosing on a property, which is very important to the administration. So again, while this is not a perfect agreement, it's an agreement, and we finally get this albatross out from under us because we've been dealing with this for quite a while, and there was a lawsuit that was pending, so the lawsuit has been pulled or will be pulled once this agreement passes. So that's the main thing, and I just want to bring people up to stuff on that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Parazzo?
Yes, a couple of declarations. The other night, we talked about the civilian police review board. The council is looking to appoint someone, and we are now accepting resumes, so if you're interested in serving on the civilian police review board, please send your resume to me via email or here at City Hall. My email address is on the website on the City Council page, and we will, you know, welcome anyone who is interested in being considered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Erickson?
Thank you, Madam President. Basically, this is just a reminder to everybody who wants to save an average of $700 on their taxes, that the Star, signing up for the Star, time is running out. So December 31st is the deadline. If you have Basic Star, most people, if you own and reside in your home, qualify for Basic Star. And if you had it last time, you won't automatically get it next time unless you go online and sign up, or you call the tax department at 518-457-2036. And so again, I'll just remind everybody, if you'd like to put an average of $700, it says here, it's an average of $700, in your pocket, or prevent it from being withdrawn from your pocket, make sure you call or go online and sign up for a Basic Star. So just... So just a reminder. Thank you.
Yes. And again, just reiterate what you said, is the fact that if just because you got it this year, you have to apply for next year. You don't automatically get it. So just want to remind everyone about that. All right. Mrs. Brucker.
This did not become, come before us in, in public safety last week, but it's appeared on my desk, so I want to just mention it especially. Very important, on January 21st is the deadline. There will be a firefighter exam for the Schenectady City Firemen to join on March 8th, 2014. But the application deadline, which is very important, is January 21st. It has an excellent salary range, and it is the possibility for young men and women to find an excellent career with the city of Schenectady. And not only that, but to work with a very fine group of men and women, very experienced, very dedicated to their job. So again, I would let people know, this is an excellent career opportunity for anyone who may be interested. The deadline to apply through Schenectady County Civil Service, again, is January 18th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right. If not, we will move to privileges of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have one person signed up, and that's Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor. On item one on the, the property tax agreement, what people don't know is that it's a 20-year length of agreement. And that goes past your binding future county letters, city council members to this agreement. Also too, is you're setting a precedent saying that, that the city should make the county whole for its taxes. You know, we did the same thing with the sales tax agreement, and now we're doing the same thing with this. And we need to be able to separate the two. On the sales tax agreement, you know, we've lost well over $10 million in additional revenue, if not more. If you take the old sales tax agreement that you had prior to 2008, and, you know, there's no accountability whatsoever. Also, and this agreement does not set aside exactly the control of the properties. And, you know, we need to be able to take a look at things, but also, 20 years, that's just way too far out. And any city council member past four years can be able to get this agreement completely wiped out. You know, we need to take a look at which way we're going. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. So at this point, then, I'll entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda?
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Brucker, seconded by Mr. Iggy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Then we'll move to privilege of the floor regarding city business, and I have four people signed up. Joe Rodriguez.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. That's right, we do have the one roll call vote, so the clerk would read that again, and then call the roll.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the city of Schenectady to settle a claim by Vincent and Donna Iggy.
All right. If you call the roll.
Ms. Perazzo?
Aye.
Ms. Porterfield?
Aye.
Mr. Erickson?
Aye.
Ms. Brucker?
Yes.
Mr. Iggy.
Yes, since this claim involves myself and my wife, I'll give a brief explanation of what happened. We had a problem with our water pressure at our house. When the plumber was called in, it was found that it was the city's piece of equipment that was faulty. And at that time, the city plumbing inspector also required for me to change our lateral, which was three-quarter inch copper, to three, to one-inch copper. And after the fact, it was, the code is kind of ambiguous when I checked with our corporation counsel. So the main part of this is, you know, I will be reimbursed, and my wife will be reimbursed for the money that we put out for the city's problem. But this code problem that we have with what we're requiring for laterals, we're going to have the law department and the water department be working on this to change the code, so this won't happen to anyone else, and it'll be clear of what's required and what's not required. That's where the problem was as far as the legislation went that we had prior to this. So it's one of those things that I have to say, it's, it can be, look like it's something, you know, I'm a city council person, but what it is, what it is. And it was the city's problem, it was faulty city equipment that caused our loss in water pressure. So I will abstain on this. Thank you.
Ms. King?
Aye.
And we didn't move in a second. We didn't move for a second.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's all right. We're just, a technical thing here, I didn't have anyone move this to the agenda or second it, so we'll backtrack here. So would someone like to move this?
Aye.
Okay. Second. Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we have taken the roll call vote, so it does carry, so, thank you. All right. Now we'll move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. First person I have signed up to speak is Joe Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here for, you know, I'm having a problem where we have a neighbor who's putting the dead, the lives of citizens in Washington, Hattlerbrand. This is the beginning of Hattlerbrand, early in February this year, when we had that little snowstorm. As recently as Monday, December 16th, on Sunday, excuse me, the 15th, we had about 13 inches of snow. Washington Street was never plowed. On Monday, I had to call the ambulance for my father-in-law, who passed away on Monday. The ambulance and, we even talked to Lieutenant Keogh, they had a hard time trying to get to us. That's not the problem about the snow, it's the problem that we have a neighbor that will plow a lane from his house down, and gives false sense to the city that the street was plowed. If you look at them three pictures, that's very important about Hattlerbrand, where he took the snow early in February and blocked the whole street. So if there was a case of emergency, they would never got in there. And given the false sense that the city streets are being plowed by the city, they're not. This gentleman is jeopardizing a lot of people's lives. There's an elderly man who lives at 43 Washington Street, and has, maybe twice or three times a month, the ambulance have to come and get him, pick him up. Now, if we have this guy taking the snow, this bank that was there, on my mother-in-law's property, he took his plow and put the snow and blocked the street again, from 41 Washington towards the end. He put it right back on the street after the city cleared the street. This gentleman is not authorized to plow city streets. This gentleman has no right. He doesn't, he has his own driveway. Plow your driveway, leave everybody else alone. I hired somebody earlier in February to finish our street after this gentleman jeopardized us. He's putting people's lives in danger. And I went to the police, I went to Officer General Services, and they sent me up to legal services. Legal services sent me to the police department, Mr. Carl Falatiko, and the police department said there's nothing they can do. Who do we turn to? We're going to wait for another tragic accident? Are we going to wait till a fire before we decide to do something? Proof is in the pudding.
Okay. Thank you. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor. Last, last two weeks ago, the mayor made a comment on the Alco, on the DSS building project. One of the things the mayor had forgotten was, is that, yes, this is private development. And he says, well, this one wouldn't happen if, if the numbers didn't work right. Well, the city has, under economic development, has rules and regulations, and that is that the developer cannot make more than 5% ROI, which is a return on investment. So what is the numbers? Also, the city council has rules that the development has to create jobs. What jobs did it create? Also too, is, is that this project is said that it would create housing. Well, what type of housing? They said that it's supposed to be 50% low income, but what definition of low income are you using? You know, all these things that are coming across, that are not even being, being addressed, when you're also talking about the $69,000, where's that coming out of the community development block grant? It's coming out of the 15%. That means you're looking at a 20 to 30% cut across the board of the current services that, that we can't even meet currently right now. So there's a lot of questions that are answered, that are, that need to be answered, that are not. And you just rammed us through. It isn't that we disregard any of the pilot programs, we need full accountability. That's what we've been asking for. The city's required, as of April 1st of every year, to do a full accountability on the economic developments and the pilot programs. It's not being done. Also too, is that I wanted to remind what Carl had just emphasized, please file for your STAR exemptions, it's due. Also too, is I wanted to congratulate Barbara, Councilwoman Barbara Blanchard, on her retirement. I was glad to work with her on several things within the disabled community, and to work with her on the Parks and Rec Committees. And just wish her everything very good for the rest of the holidays, and everybody else, happy holidays.
Okay. Thank you. Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hobbs, Schenectady. Talking about the snow, these cars need to be off the street, so the plows can plow the streets right. Because if they're not, you get a ticket, you get told, and you got to pay. Whoever they are, everywhere in Schenectady, the side streets, the stockade, everywhere. And down Mallard Street, too. I say they need fixed potholes. I say it's got to be done, because too many things are happening left and right. I say you got people coming down, you got dropped older people off, and people coming down the street speeding like, like they shouldn't even be speeding at all. They should stop and think, and let these people get out of the car. The elderly people have a hard time, and it's not easy for them. So they better think twice. That's what I want, something done. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Benone.
We had the snow last Sunday, and I've got to admit, around my house and my area, it was plowed good. The alleyway was plowed, first time in I don't know how long, that right after the snowfall, it was plowed. But the other day, I go down Hegeman Street between Gilleyland Avenue and Broadway, somebody cleared the whole front of their house, the snow, it's in the street. On the corner of Hegeman and Gilleyland, there's a little business there, took all the snow across the street, pushed it across the street. I come up William Street, I had to wait for a truck to push snow out of the alleyway across the street. I know there's problems that we're not going to be able, can't get all this, but these code enforcement people that ride around, if they see something like this, can they do something? That's my question. Secondly, your reply last, Mr. McCarthy, last two weeks ago, about the grant that we got for tearing down buildings and whatnot, what's privately owned and what's not, you mentioned the Oak Street Bridge is owned by CSX. And I know your, your engineer has got this thing going, I know we have the design for it, but you said, if there's a better idea, you'd like to hear from it. Well, when this thing first happened, I had brought up right here to talk to Senator Schumer, I didn't mention Senator Gildebrand, but Schumer, to see if he could talk to CSX. Then we had the town meeting with Mr. Tonko. Vince brought up the same thing, and Mr. Tonko says, let's have a meeting with CSX and the city. I don't know if that ever happened, to see if we could get them to pay for it. I know it's in the process of getting done, I understand that. But can these people get CSX to help pay for this? I mean, it's coming out of our pocket. And when the bridge was first closed, someone over here, I don't remember who it was, says, if it's unsafe to drive over, it must be unsafe for the trains to go by. Mr. Iggy also echoed that a couple of months later. Maybe they could do something, even put a stop to these trains coming through, if the government can. And finally, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have no one else signed up for privilege of the floor, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we'll move to miscellaneous business of the council. Don't all speak at once. Ms. Porterfield.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and, well, we'll see you next year at the council meeting.
Mr. Iggy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. About the snow issues, there's, there seems to be total disregard, again, for city ordinances. And I've had a lot of complaints about, and I've witnessed, plows, private plows, plowing snows across major streets. As a matter of fact, when I was coming to the committee meeting last week, there was a gentleman from a business on the corner of Mallard and Broadway, plowing snow right across Mallard Street, up, up into the bank. And it's going on and on. And, and the other thing is people blowing snow into the street. It goes on and on. The crews have a hard enough time trying to keep things clear. What Mr. Rodriguez brought up, it's clear. I mean, there's obviously violations here, but the problem seems to come, because I've asked myself, I had people call me and say, who do we call to complain to? And no one seems to know. You call the Bureau of Service? I guess police are supposed to issue the tickets. But anyhow, long story short, I would like to see this discussed in committee, where we know there's a plan in place, and who is going to enforce our ordinances, because we can't have people, this is the first snow of the season. And we had some, it wasn't the blockbuster storm of the century by any means, it was about a foot of snow. It's a lot of snow, but it's not the end of the world. But there was a lot of problems with this storm as far as people not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And the other thing with parking, that's another issue. Everybody asks, why don't we do like Albany, why can't we do this? I realize these things are expensive, but I would like to see this discussed. So we have answers for what to tell our constituents when they call up and say, why is this happening this way? Because I can't give them an answer. Why does this happen? Why don't we have opposite street parking? Is there too many cars? What's the deal with this? So maybe it's good that we had an early snow, because all this stuff is out there now, and maybe we can come up with a good plan. But I would like to see, we need some enforcement, we need some tickets issued for obviously scofflaws, people that are throwing snow into the street, either with private plows, or with their snow blowers, or with a hand shovel. To throw it in the street is, is not the thing to do. You have to do what everybody else does, put it back on your property. That's where, where it came from, and that's where it belongs. But I think until we start issuing some appearance tickets, this will go on and on and on. So anyhow, with that, it's just something that I think we have to address, and I would like to see it on the committee agenda. Now, I want to make an announcement for Bellevue Preservation Incorporated. Their next meeting, it's a while back, but we're not going to have a meeting till then, a while ahead. It's January 9th, at St. Paul's Episcopal Church on Fairview Avenue. That's, that's a Thursday. And their guest speaker will be city engineer Chris Wallen. Public's invited, and I'm sure the bridge will be the topic of discussion there. So anybody that's interested in the Oak Street Bridge, I would advise them to go to this meeting, and maybe, maybe Mr. Wallen can answer some of your questions. And with that, I'd like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. My colleagues, and, and the people out there that are watching, have the best of the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, Madam President. I really, it was great to have Barbara back for the last council meeting of the year. And really, I want to say a special thank you to her. You know, when I first got on the council, I was like, I was a person who was nervous in public speaking, had lots of questions, as you might imagine. And Barbara was one of those people on the council that when I had any questions, I could call her up after the committee meeting, or after the council meeting, and say, hey, Barbara, what does this mean? How does this work? This is my opinion on something, what do I do? And even if she didn't agree with me on the issue, Barbara would say, well, this is what you should do. And she would give, give me good advice. So having Barbara on the council as, as a mentor was, was extremely invaluable to me, and I just wanted to thank her, you know, again publicly, and wish her all the best. And again, it was great to see her tonight. So that's really all I had to say for tonight. But happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everybody, and enjoy, enjoy your couple of days off here, if you have them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Brucker?
Yeah, I have to echo Carl's remarks. It was great to have Barbara back here tonight, and I'm so glad that we were able to do this for her, and so glad that she was able to attend. And what a wonderful tribute of And what a wonderful tribute of all the people that were here tonight for her. I also wanted to mention, I've been asked to mention that the annual, for the Woodlawn Park Preservation Committee, their annual ZD dinner is going to be at the Woodlawn Reform Church on January 7th, which is a Tuesday. Help me out here, Chad.
Wednesday the?
Wednesday the 8th. I knew you'd help me. Where were you when I needed my glasses tonight, though? Want to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, everything that goes along with it, Happy New Year, and we'll see everyone back here next year.
Right.
January 1st, next year, right? Okay.
Yep. Okay, anyone else? All right, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, it was good to see Barbara.
We wish her and Art many years of happiness and, again, continued involvement in the community. Want to thank people during the snowstorm, those people that did comply with the rules. I think the crews generally did a pretty good job. I think we towed 40 cars, there were 200 and some citations issued, so we are doing enforcement effort. This issue on Moisten Street, I referred today for the appropriate remedial action. And again, we're going to do what we have to do. We try and get the job done, look for people to work with us, but you have to have people that are going to play by the rules because it makes it a lot easier for everyone. So again, thank everyone that did comply. Again, anytime I didn't take any calls from the council, you think there's a problem or something's not going quite right, I expect to hear about it. I wish everyone Merry Christmas, the best in 2014, and we'll see everybody back here in three weeks.
Yes, right. So I would just echo that again, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Mr. Erickson, seconded by Mrs. Brucker, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.
Very good. Time for some chicken parm.
Yes, right. Five of eight. Seven of eight.
Not bad, right?